Let's get started. I'd like to call this village board meeting to order. So with that, if I could have, let's go to the approval of minutes over here. I need a motion, please, to approve the Board of Trustees' regular meeting minutes of September 28, 2015.
So moved.
Motion by Rikus.
Second.
Second by Norton. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Rikus.
Yes.
Norton.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, a motion, please, to approve the public hearing meeting minutes of September 28, 2015 at 7:00 PM.
So moved.
Motion by Kim.
Second.
Second by Norton. Any discussion?
Just to clarify, it's the 7:01 PM.
Oh, is that right? Okay.
Because the previous one was the 7:00 PM.
That's not in the minutes, that's just the agenda.
Oh, okay, okay.
That's just how the agenda prints it out. The minutes should reflect.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Kim.
Yes.
Norton.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Rikus.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Great, motion carries. All right, next on our agenda is the time of the evening when we have public commentary. Is anyone present that wishes to address the village board at this time at the podium? Raise your hand if you want to. Okay. No one? All right. Very good. We'll close the floor then and move on to presentations and awards. First up is the 2015 Gold Star Award Presentations. These are very important to us. These are annual. They come to us from our Economic Development Commission. And Larry Galis is our chairman, and he is going to present these awards. And what I'd like to do, I'll go out there with these, with the plaques and everything. He is going to present the awards and describe what each one is for. And this is very important to our whole board, not just me and the chairman, but also all our trustees. So I'd like, if we could, all the trustees to come around and maybe just stand here. We're going to have a photo op with each one and honor the folks as they come up and get them, okay? And I'd like to just say a little bit about the Gold Star Award Program for the new trustees who may not be aware of it. The Gold Star Program is one component of the Economic Development Commission's business retention strategy. The program is intended to recognize significant accomplishments by Mundaline businesses, publicize and promote those accomplishments by publicly recognizing the businesses, create pride in the local business community, and encourage other businesses to follow the good examples set by the award winners. This criteria is not very specific. What we're intention is to recognize any business that makes a significant investment in their property or receives a major award or accomplishes something of distinction. This award is given out once a year, and to date, we've given out approximately 15 awards in the last four years. So we think it's very important. We appreciate all the businesses that have contributed to Mundaline. And without further ado, we're going to go into this. First award for the 2015 Gold Star recipient is the Butterfield Body Works Car Star. One of the key tenets of Car Star Auto Body Repair's expert's business philosophy focuses on caring for their customers and their community. They've demonstrated this through their support of the Make-A-Wish Foundation of America, their National Military Recognition Month, the National Autobody Council's recycle rides initiatives, Skills USA, and many other programs across the country. Car Star opened in Mundaline in 1996, and I know for a fact that they've given out quite a few cars to people who have been very deserving of it, and we appreciate their effort. So without further ado, would the show please come up? Congratulations, sir. You're welcome. All right, let's squeeze you in the middle. We're going to have some pictures taken there. I'm good, I'm always in the back. Congratulations. We'll try to make this fast, I know you guys aren't used to standing all the time. Our next award is going to go to Sizmax. Sizmax was recognized for its decision to expand its manufacturing facility in Mundaline, which is going to be a 40,000-square-foot addition, which is currently under construction. And we're looking definitely forward to having an open house and greeting when that's done. Sizmax originally opened up in Mundaline in 2003. They expanded in 2007 of another 50,000 square feet. So Sizmax is getting to be a very, very important part of our community, and we appreciate their involvement in it. So the gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen from Sizmax. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Congratulations, thank you.
Congratulations. We expect the girls to continue.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Well, that's...
Oh, that's fine.
Don, you need to come up.
I don't hate to be...
See, I can just, I'm like a photobomb, you know?
I've got it ready, and I can't see Don.
All right? Thank you very much, congratulations. Our next award is the Doubletree Hotel. In 2001, there was a major expansion and renovation of the Doubletree. They also sponsored a police department's Special Olympics annual golf outing. They bring businesses and customers to Mundaline, and they've been sponsoring many of the corporate events here in town. They also has been sponsoring the annual business appreciation breakfast that the EDC puts on, as well as other events. And we appreciate them coming here and expanding their business. So hip, come up.
Congratulations.
The next award is going to Bill's Pub. Bill's Pub has been in the newspaper lately. They have 58 years of family ownership in Mundaline, which I think is amazing that you can keep a restaurant going for 58 years. They have been participating in every Mundaline munch for over 30 years, and they support numerous charitable community events, and we hope they're going to stay here for another 58 years. So without further ado, with Bill's Pub representative? With all the camera flashes, I feel like I'm on the red carpet. Our last recipient is the Taste of Paris, our most famous Paris restaurant, and certainly the best. Taste of Paris has had a community involvement with the following events. First of all, they opened in Mundaline in 2010. They have participated in the Park on Park, the One World Festival, the summer concerts, the Beer Fest, the Art Festival, the Fremont Library Gingerbread House. I don't know how he makes any money, he keeps giving all this food away. And of course, he's also involved heavily with a lot of events here in the village hall. So without further ado, with Chef Claude, I didn't recognize him, he did that in his white coat on. Congratulations. Congratulations. Oh, hi, a new generation. I'll stand behind you, I'm short now.
Next to a good-looking girl. That's what I'm French.
And go Cubs tonight, okay?
Which I understand they're winning five to two. Five to two. Five to two, okay. All righty. Mr. Mayor, that's it. We do know that the Gold Star recipients will be highlighted on the front page of the village website as soon as possible after the presentation. Press release announcing the award winners and their accomplishments shall be sent to all media outlets serving the village of Mundaline and posted on the TRIB local website. The award winners will also be featured in the next issue of Mundaline Business Matters, and I believe they will be invited to the MCC Fall Luncheon on behalf of the EDC. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, trustees, and thank you and congratulations to all the Gold Star Award winners. Here, here. All right. Thank you, Mr. Galis. I understand it's five to four now. Cubs up, five, four?
No.
Oh, there we go. All right. Now, the next item in my report is a, please, a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing Amendment Number Two to the Real Estate Sales Contract. Oh, wait a minute, timeout. No, I'm up at Presentations and Awards, I'm sorry. Mayoral proclamation. Okay. Well, I haven't, I'm sorry, I dropped down a bit. All right. There's a mayoral proclamation in your packets, and this is naming October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And a lot of the language in that is, you know, pretty much, I'm going to say, it's boilerplate that, in my opinion, doesn't do justice to the real issue. I mean, it does, it's all good stuff, but listen, it's an issue in our town. We have 31,000 people here. And if you were to ask our Director of Public Safety, our chiefs, deputy chiefs, what's the, you know, top two things that our police are called out on, you know, domestic situations is right up there in the top two or three, if not the top. Huge issue. And when you throw in alcohol, when you throw in other issues, it's an issue in our community. And so I just want to make sure everyone's aware that October is a month to be more aware of this. And if you here in the audience, or you watching, if you yourself, or a victim, or you know someone that is, and you want some help, one great place that we refer people to is called A Safe Place. And the website is www.ASafePlaceForHelp.org. I believe that's it, is that correct, Chief? Asafeplaceforhelp.org. If you, or if you know anyone that maybe could use some help, or it's a good referral to give them, okay? Perfect. All right, public hearings, there are none this evening. Moving over to my report, I have two motions and then an announcement. So, in my report, Item A is a motion, please, from a trustee to pass an ordinance amending Ordinance 89-6-23 and Ordinance 99-4-19 imposing a surcharge for the enhanced 9/11 emergency telephone system. So moved. Motion by Semple.
Second.
Second by Abernathy. Discussion? Okay. Clerk, please call the roll.
Semple.
Yes.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Norton.
Yes.
Rikus.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Okay. Now, let me get my papers in order here, because, okay, so this is out. All right, one moment. This is out. Okay. All right. Excuse me here. All right. The next item, make sure this is, in fact, the next item. Sorry about that, just, all right, very good. The next item concerns the parking lot on the corner of Park and Seymour. So I'm just going to go straight to the narrative written here. For the benefit of those listening that don't have the benefit of what's written in the packet, I'm just going to read this to give some background, and then we'll get to the motion itself. So, on June 23, 2014, the village board authorized myself, the mayor, to make an offer of $150,000 for the purchase of the property at 498 North Seymour. That's the parking lot there, across from Park Street Restaurant on the corner of Seymour and Park. The offer was not approved by BMO Harris, the bank. On December 8, 2014, the village board authorized myself to offer $170,000 for the purchase of the property. The offer was not approved at that time by BMO Harris. On August 7, 2015, a judgment of foreclosure and sale was entered by the Circuit Court for the property at 498 North Seymour owned by Holcombe Development LLC. The judgment ordered the sale of the property. Shortly thereafter, the property was scheduled to be sold at a sheriff's sale on September 29, 2015. At the same time the property was scheduled for sale, BMO Harris, through its attorney, contacted the village and inquired into the village's interest in purchasing the property. On September 14, 2015, the village board reached a consensus in closed session to reaffirm its offer to purchase the property for an amount not to exceed $170,000 plus any amounts owed for property taxes. Property taxes are estimated at approximately $35,000. Upon notifying BMO Harris for the village's interest in purchasing the property, the sheriff's sale was continued to October 13, 2015. All right? The attached addendum number two to the Real Estate Sales Contract was provided to BMO Harris and is under review. We anticipate their approval prior to the next board meeting, which is October 26, and that's the reason that this matter is before the village board at this time. So the property has officially gone into foreclosure, and we are now negotiating directly with the bank. This is an important piece to us in terms of public parking for both current and future businesses in that area, and also for controlling what could be a key piece in future redevelopment efforts. So with that said, I ask for a motion, please, to adopt a resolution authorizing Amendment Number Two to the Real Estate Sales Contract to purchase 498 North Seymour Avenue in Mundaline, Illinois. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Rikus, second by Abernathy. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, trustee Kim.
I'll be voting in the negative tonight, and I would just like to state a few reasons why. I believe it would be a cleaner purchase after it had gone to sheriff's sale instead of before. I'm not in favor of these $35,000 in bag taxes, which we must pay if this goes through. In general, I'm not in favor of government purchasing property that could be developed by a private developer, but with this price and the bag taxes, I feel it's inflated value over its true worth. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, anyone else? Okay. Clerk, please call the roll.
Rikus.
Yes.
Abernathy.
No.
Kim.
No.
Semple.
Yes.
Norton.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Norton.
Yes.
Rikus.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Okay. Now, let me get my papers in order here, because, okay, so this is out. All right, one moment. This is out. Okay. All right. Excuse me here. All right. The next item, make sure this is, in fact, the next item. Sorry about that, just, all right, very good. The next item concerns the parking lot on the corner of Park and Seymour. So I'm just going to go straight to the narrative written here. For the benefit of those listening that don't have the benefit of what's written in the packet, I'm just going to read this to give some background, and then we'll get to the motion itself. So, on June 23, 2014, the village board authorized myself, the mayor, to make an offer of $150,000 for the purchase of the property at 498 North Seymour. That's the parking lot there, across from Park Street Restaurant on the corner of Seymour and Park. The offer was not approved by BMO Harris, the bank. On December 8, 2014, the village board authorized myself to offer $170,000 for the purchase of the property. The offer was not approved at that time by BMO Harris. On August 7, 2015, a judgment of foreclosure and sale was entered by the Circuit Court for the property at 498 North Seymour owned by Holcombe Development LLC. The judgment ordered the sale of the property. Shortly thereafter, the property was scheduled to be sold at a sheriff's sale on September 29, 2015. At the same time the property was scheduled for sale, BMO Harris, through its attorney, contacted the village and inquired into the village's interest in purchasing the property. On September 14, 2015, the village board reached a consensus in closed session to reaffirm its offer to purchase the property for an amount not to exceed $170,000 plus any amounts owed for property taxes. Property taxes are estimated at approximately $35,000. Upon notifying BMO Harris for the village's interest in purchasing the property, the sheriff's sale was continued to October 13, 2015. All right? The attached addendum number two to the Real Estate Sales Contract was provided to BMO Harris and is under review. We anticipate their approval prior to the next board meeting, which is October 26, and that's the reason that this matter is before the village board at this time. So the property has officially gone into foreclosure, and we are now negotiating directly with the bank. This is an important piece to us in terms of public parking for both current and future businesses in that area, and also for controlling what could be a key piece in future redevelopment efforts. So with that said, I ask for a motion, please, to adopt a resolution authorizing Amendment Number Two to the Real Estate Sales Contract to purchase 498 North Seymour Avenue in Mundaline, Illinois. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Rikus, second by Abernathy. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, trustee Kim.
I'll be voting in the negative tonight, and I would just like to state a few reasons why. I believe it would be a cleaner purchase after it had gone to sheriff's sale instead of before. I'm not in favor of these $35,000 in bag taxes, which we must pay if this goes through. In general, I'm not in favor of government purchasing property that could be developed by a private developer, but with this price and the bag taxes, I feel it's inflated value over its true worth. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, anyone else? Okay. Clerk, please call the roll.
Rikus.
Yes.
Abernathy.
No.
Kim.
No.
Semple.
Yes.
Norton.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Motion carries. Very good. All right, motion carries. Thank you very much. All right. The other item on my report, then I'll have another brief thing after this, and that is this. Make sure I got it on my pages. All right. So I'd like to give everyone just a heads up that at the next board meeting on October 26, we will formally address the issue of an overnight parking restriction. So earlier this summer, we heard a presentation by Public Safety Director Gunther, and we gathered a significant amount of public input through various avenues. What emerged from that process is a compromise that I think will work for our community to both address some of the parking, street parking issues we have around town, and also to allow those that need to park on the street overnight to continue to do so without too much of an inconvenience. I'll bring this to the board for discussion on the 26th, and it's called Alternate Side Overnight Parking. And the idea is this: Each night, cars parked on the street between 3:00 and 5:00 a.m. would have to be on the side of the street such that the odd or even status of the address is on that side corresponds with the odd or even status of the calendar date of that particular morning. So for example, today's the 12th, okay? Tonight, before retiring to bed, residents that require overnight street parking would make sure their car is parked on the side of the street with the odd addresses, because at 3:00 a.m., the calendar date then would be on the 13th, which is an odd number. The next night, those same cars will need to be on the other side of the street with even addresses, because at 3:00 a.m. at that time, it will be on the 14th, an even number. All right? Now, advantages to this approach are numerous. First, it will help reduce the number of cars parked on the street overnight. Many residents will conclude that it's easier simply to park in their driveway or garage rather than switch cars back and forth on the sides every evening. Also, those with inoperable automobiles will have to remedy that situation immediately. Next, residents requiring overnight street parking would now be able to do so without calling the police department like they would otherwise need to do if we implemented a full restriction like that done by all of our neighboring villages. This means, let's see, okay, now, one point here is this means that later in the day, cars could park on both sides of the street, subject to other current localized parking restrictions. It's only for that 3:00 to 5:00 a.m. period that they have to be parked on the correct side. Now, there'll be plenty of questions, and our goal is to answer those questions as part of the board packet to be released, let's say, a week from this Friday, okay? There will be a memo in there, hopefully going through all the questions that could come up, such as, what about streets with one-sided parking already? What about cul-de-sacs? Need for posted signs? There's going to be a lot of questions, okay? So if you could hold off on those until after we see the memo to be distributed then, and it might come out earlier, we'll see, all right? That would be best, that we know questions will come, and then we'll address those in that memo in that packet, and then also certainly at the meeting itself when we bring it for discussion. Okay? So that's just a heads up for our residents and for us, so we all kind of know that that's coming. Finally, I wanted to make mention of, in the Daily Herald Business Ledger, our own Larson Manufacturing in Mundaline was honored with the 2015 Entrepreneurial Excellence Award for Innovation. It's quite an honor, this is a great piece in the Daily Herald Ledger here, and congratulations, I'm writing a letter to David Larson, their CEO, congratulating them on behalf of myself and our board, and we wish them congratulations. So with that, that concludes my report. All right? Let's go to the trustee reports. Public Works Committee. Trustee Russell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have one motion on the agenda tonight. I'd like to put on a motion to adopt a resolution accepting proposals and approving purchase orders for the purchase of a fuel management system and fuel dispensers in the amount of $36,460.
Second.
Motion by Russell, second by Abernathy. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Russell.
Yes.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Norton.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Rikus.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I believe that's all we've got tonight, Adam. Yep, that's all we've got tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Finance Committee. Trustee Semple.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two items on this evening's Finance Committee agenda. The first one is probably the first of a couple of these we'll see in the next couple of board meetings. It's a motion to approve the payment to trustee Rikus for expenses he incurred while attending the Illinois Municipal League Conference, which took place last month. So I'll make that motion.
Motion by Semple.
Second.
Discussion by Abernathy. Discussion?
Mr. Rikus, this is for you to abstain from.
Thank you.
Very good. Anyone else? Okay. Clerk, please call the roll.
Semple.
Yes.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Norton.
Yes.
Rikus.
Abstain.
Semple. Kim.
Yes.
Abernathy.
Norton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
The second motion for this evening is to pay our bills. With that, I'll make a motion to approve the payment of the bills, as indicated in the governing body report for the period between September 29, 2015, ending October 12, 2015, for the amount of $866,395.01, as submitted in the board packet this evening.
Motion by Semple.
Second.
Second by Abernathy. Discussion?
Clerk, please call the roll.
Semple.
Yes.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Rikus.
Abstain.
Semple. Kim.
Yes.
Abernathy.
Norton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
The second motion for this evening is to pay our bills. With that, I'll make a motion to approve the payment of the bills, as indicated in the governing body report for the period between September 29, 2015, ending October 12, 2015, for the amount of $866,395.01, as submitted in the board packet this evening.
Motion by Semple.
Second.
Second by Abernathy. Discussion? All right. Clerk, please call the roll.
Semple.
Yes.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Norton.
Yes.
Rikus.
Yes.
part of the board packet to be released, let's say, a week from this Friday, okay? There will be a memo in there, hopefully going through all the questions that could come up, such as, what about streets with one-sided parking already? What about cul-de-sacs? Need for posted signs? There's going to be a lot of questions, okay? So if you could hold off on those until after we see the memo to be distributed then, and it might come out earlier, we'll see, all right? That would be best, that we know questions will come, and then we'll address those in that memo, in that packet, and then also certainly at the meeting itself when we bring it for discussion. Okay, so that's just a heads-up for our residents and for us, so we all kind of know that that's coming. Finally, I wanted to make mention of, in the Daily Herald Business Ledger, our own Larson Manufacturing in Mundaline was honored with the 2015 Entrepreneurial Excellence Award for Innovation. It's quite an honor, this is a great piece in the Daily Herald Ledger here, and congratulations, I'm writing a letter to David Larson, their CEO, congratulating them on behalf of myself and our board, and we wish them congratulations. So with that, that concludes my report. All right? Let's go to the trustee reports. Public Works Committee, trustee Russell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have one motion on the agenda tonight. I'd like to put on a motion to adopt a resolution accepting proposals and approving purchase orders for the purchase of a fuel management system and fuel dispensers in the amount of $36,460.
Second.
Motion by Russell, second by Abernathy, discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Russell?
Yes.
Norton?
Yes.
Rikus?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Rikus?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Rikus?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Norton?
Yes.
Rikus?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Rikus?
Yes.
Motion carries. Mr. Mayor, I believe that's all we've got tonight, Adam. Yep, that's all we've got tonight, thank you. Thank you. Next up, Finance Committee, trustee Semple.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two items on this evening's Finance Committee agenda. The first one is probably the first of a couple of these, we'll see in the next couple of board meetings, is a motion to approve the payment to trustee Rikus for expenses he incurred while attending the Illinois Municipal League Conference, which took place last month. So I'll make that motion.
Motion by Semple.
Second.
Discussion by Abernathy, discussion.
Mr. Rikus, this is for you to abstain from.
Thank you.
Very good. Anyone else? Okay. Clerk, please call the roll.
Semple?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Rikus?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Rikus?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Rikus?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The second motion for this evening is to pay our bills.
With that, I'll make a motion to approve the payment of the bills, as indicated in the governing body report, for the period between September 29, 2015, ending October 12, 2015, for the amount of $866,395 and 1 cent, as submitted in the board packet this evening.
Motion by Semple.
Second.
Second by Abernathy, discussion.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Semple?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Rikus?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Rikus?
Yes.
Motion carries.
That's it, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Public Safety Committee, trustee Rikus.
I have no motions this evening, Mr. Mayor, but I just would like to call on Director Gunther, and maybe get a little update on some of the events and activities, both in the Police and Fire Department.
Thank you. From the police side, we have just one thing I'd like to announce, we have a coat drive for veterans Friday night at the MHS football game, home football game. So anybody that's interested in helping out there, there'll be boxes to donate used coats for our veterans. They then are distributed throughout Lake County to anybody that needs those, and extras go to the American Red Cross. That's it from the police side, I'll turn it over to Deputy Chief Lark.
Hello. A couple of things from the Fire Department this past couple of weeks. Lieutenant Jones has completed his Blue Card Instant Command Certification. All the school fire drills have been completed, and we participated with Countryside and Vernon Hills Police Department today in an active shooter drill at Vernon Hills High School. Good training for all. That's all I have at this time.
Thank you very much, that's my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next up, Community and Economic Development Committee, trustee Abernathy.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, I do have a few motions this evening. First, I have a motion to approve the Community and Economic Development Committee meeting of September 28, 2015, at 6:30.
Motion by Abernathy.
Second.
Second by Kim.
It has to be Russell or Norton.
It has to be Russell or Norton.
Okay.
Okay. Second by Russell. Any discussion? Nope? Clerk, please call the roll.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Norton?
Yes.
Rikus?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Rikus?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Rikus?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Second.
Second by Semple, discussion.
Just a question, I thought at one of the previous meetings that that ordinance was granted to someone else, but I see it's still under Party Fantasy. Why is that?
It's Party Fantasy Mundaline, so all those development rights did get transferred over to the new entity. That new entity has requested for that portion of the business to be repealed, or that ordinance relating to that business be repealed, because they no longer wish to run and operate the outdoor amusement portion of the business.
So it has to be repealed to the original grantor?
It's repealed to the, no, it's repealed to the new grantor.
And that is Grant Party Fantasy Mundaline?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Clerk, please call the roll.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Norton?
Yes.
Rikus?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, now I have a 2041 Chadwick Way variation for rear yard encroachment, so I have a motion to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission minutes and findings of fact.
Second.
Motion by Abernathy, second by Kim, discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Norton?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Rikus?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Now I have a motion to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendations.
Motion by Abernathy.
Second.
Second by Kim, discussion. Okay. Clerk, please call the roll.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Norton?
Yes.
Rikus?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And then I have a motion to authorize staff to draft an ordinance granting certain variations regarding a rear yard setback encroachment at 2041 Chadwick Way.
Motion by Abernathy.
Second.
Second by Kim, any discussion? I think the packet was very self-explanatory, did a great job of explaining everything, so, very good. Clerk, please call the roll.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Rikus?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Norton?
Yes.
Rikus?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, now I have a few new businesses that opened. We have Golden Reed's doing business as Healthy Massage, and that's a foot and body massage, and it's Asian bodywork such as trigger point and acupressure. We also have Monica's Nail Spa at 402 North Seymour Avenue, and that is spa services as manicures, pedicures, facials, eyebrows, and body waxing. And Yumi Sushi at 662 South Lake Street, and it's traditional Japanese food and Japanese culture of food. So that sounds interesting. And I would also like to say that this past week, the mayor and I were down at the International Shopping Center Trade Show at Navy Pier. I believe we made some really good contacts, and one person that especially took our packet of our incentive program for businesses, and is taking it back to use as a model for his village, because what they said was, this shows how truly business-friendly Mundaline is. So, that's kudos to us, because we now are getting recognition not only from around us, but also from people far away, as how friendly we can be, and people coming up and saying,